Brian, would you lead us in our invocation tonight? Misty, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will go ahead and convene our meeting tonight. We'll start with roll call. Come on in, have a seat. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throgmorton.
Here.
Marty Lindelberry.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Dana McKnight.
Here.
Don Rollins.
Here.
Anthony Foster. Our city attorney and city clerk are both present, so we will move into the adoption of our agenda. Do we have any questions, concerns, or motions concerning the agenda?
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as well.
We have a motion as second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from our June tenth meeting. Are there any questions, concerns, comments, or motions concerning the meeting minutes?
Make a motion that we accept the message. Second.
We have a motion as second to accept the meeting minutes from June ten. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Anthony Foster just made it in. Next is our public forum. Do we have anyone who would like to address the council tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on. Uh, first item of business is our business reports. Do we have anybody from Planning Commission here tonight? No? Okay, so the first business report is Planning Commission report. They had uh, minutes from their uh, from their meeting, their public hearing that took place right before our meeting last month. So they had some minutes in there, and that is really all they had in our packet. Are there any questions concerning Planning Commission? Okay. So we'll move to the library report. Marie?
Hello. So we've been having a lot of fun over with summer meeting, um, and we've had a huge increase in attendance this year for the programs. So we had a large event called Bud Stravaganza, and we had like seventy-six people show up for that. So we're really excited for like this other boost, and um, we also really enjoyed being invited to do fireworks again this year. Um, Lindsay told me that she estimated that she had like about a hundred and eighty people kind of stopped by for a little while while she was there. But of course, you know, we've got the clicker and we have people asking us to peel stickers, so. It's a little crazy. Um, we've got some fun events coming up. We've got a local author coming tomorrow, and Dr. Smithers is gonna be doing his annual um, stuffed animal clinic on Thursday. So if you know anyone whose stuffed animal is not feeling very good and needs to bring it by for a checkup, please, please lean him around. Um, we've also got, um, I know I said this last time, but we've got our fiftieth or golden anniversary coming up on August twenty-third. It's the open house, so we're going to have another open house this year and event for the fifty-first week of West Fork and Calgary. Questions for you?
Any questions for Marie?
I love it. Every time I drop by, it's a busy place. This is the how of the town. Thank you. It really is. Y'all are doing a great job.
I have to admit, I did not realize that Dr. Smithers was coming in and doing teddy bear clinics. Uh, I think that's fantastic.
Last time, a girl's stuffed animal broke while she was there, and he stitched it up with surgical materials, and it was good as new.
If anybody hasn't met Dr. Smithers, you need to. Great guy, great guy. Okay, well, thank you, Marie.
Thank you.
Uh, up next is the police report, and happy to present Chief Goggins to give that report.
Yay!
So is he coming up? Uh, just uh, real quick, uh, Chief Allen Burton resigned. He put in his two weeks' notice and resigned. Uh, we did not do interviews for chief police uh, this go-around. Uh, so two years ago, uh, Chief Goggins interviewed for the position, and the entire board uh, came out of that with the, the same opinion that he was gonna be chief at some point. And so I feel lucky that Chief Goggins is, is still with West Fork and was still interested in the position, so, thank you, sir.
I'm still here. Uh, good evening. Uh, let's see, tw- two hundred and seventy-seven calls for service, twenty-four reports taken, twenty-seven citations, forty-six warnings, and forty-two warrants served. So, um, as far as what's been going on this month, uh, of course, we had our Fourth of July event, which was pretty successful, as always. We're moving traffic to about as best we possibly can, and doing our best to address the issues as they come up. Uh, now, we can't please everybody, but we're trying to keep everything organized as possible. Uh, we did complete our transition to our new firearms, the blocks with the red dots on them. Uh, thank you to the Washington County Sheriff's Office, um, for facilitating that, providing good training for us. Uh, they really helped us out a lot with that. Uh, and also, we did some, some driving instructing myself, uh, with the Academy as well. We did some driving. Um, and lastly, to address the people that may be listening or here, as far as our, my Facebook famous, um, I'll, I'll, I'll fill you in on a couple of things. Number one, I'm not perfect. Our police department's not perfect. Nobody is. Uh, but I can tell you this, whether you like us or hate us, or somewhere in between, when you call to help and need help, we're gonna come help you. Cause that's the kind of people we are. Uh, I can't control the kind of people out there, but I can't control who I am and what our department does, so. Uh, you can say what you want, you're entitled to your opinion, uh, but if you call us, we're gonna come help you and do our job. Uh, obviously, everyone being respectful is, is probably a little easier, but it doesn't matter. Uh, we're, that's the kind of people we are. All of our first responders, I can feel confident about that, it's gonna be the same thing. Uh, we're gonna do our job, so, uh, whether the people like us or not. And, um, on the transparency side of things, um, absent a few laws that restrict us from releasing things, and there are exceptions to that, most of the stuff, a lot of the stuff we do is public information. If you want that information, you want that record, uh, come request it, we have to respond in a very timely manner and give that to you. So if you do think that we are hiding something or not doing something or whatever, uh, or what, what, come make a records request. You can see it for yourself. We are happy to open our doors and our records within the law, um, to that. So if there's concerns, please bring that to our attention. We're happy to open up the books and you can check them, so. Um, I just wanna make sure that's, that's out there and clear, that, that's the service we have to provide, and we will, we will, um, provide records to any requests that come to us. So that's all I got.
Any questions for Chief Goggins?
Thank you. No, I do have a comment though.
Sure.
I did the ride along finally.
Awesome.
I had fun. And, uh, the person that took me survived it, uh, and I did too. And, uh, Ri- uh, Pitts.
Riley?
No, sorry.
Bless your heart.
I know, survived it. And, um, so I have a new love, Raider, is adorable and so much fun to be around, and that's pretty much it.
Yeah, and that goes for anybody else. If, if you wanna ride along, we can make that happen, uh, give you a little taste of, of what we do, and see behind the curtain a little bit, if you will, um, and yeah, we're happy to do that. And we're really an open book. A lot of people don't realize that, that we, we are.
How are you doing today?
Um, always an issue. So, um, we are moving forward with interviews and searching for, to replace, uh, our two openings now. Uh, I think we've got one of those locked down as far as an SRO position, and now we're still trying to see who we should put back on patrol. Um, I'm, I'm looking at all options, leaning towards maybe one of our part-timers who's already got, while not certified, already has some time on us, uh, as far as, um, some work experience with us. We know how he works, at least with another officer, and we might go that route and send somebody to the Academy, uh, is probably what we're leaning towards. We've, we've got a handful of applicants, but as far as looking across those, it's kind of what I'm leaning towards, but no absolute decisions in mind on that just yet. And we've only had the opening for maybe five, I mean, publicly announced it, maybe five.
Sorry, were you sure?
Two, two, yes, sir. So obviously, I'm, I'm out of the SRO spot, so that was a spot there, and then we, um, are down one officer as well on patrol, so we're down two spots. Uh, I think I said, I think I've got one of those taken care of with somebody that is certified and, and, and good to go, and the other one will either, one of the applicants we get or possibly a part-timer. We're looking at all our options. And it's, it's kind of, it's tough. It's a tough decision to make, but, um, yeah.
Is that the SRO, uh, SRO that you think you might have covered?
Yes, I think so. Absolutely.
Any other questions for Chief Goggins?
Good job on that. Is that, he's already certified, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you, are you having issues money-wise? Is that?
Um, that's a difficult question to ask. I, I have went through and started the face survey again. We've done that in the past years. The last time I did that was in twenty-twenty-three or twenty-two, to see where we're at across the board. I'm also trying to add in there the number of officers they have, their population, uh, to see, uh, we're trying to do an apples-to-apples kind of comparison as best as possible. Uh, because while state police is starting at like seventy thousand or something, I don't think we're competing for the same applicants the state police is. However, uh, we're still pulling kind of from the same pool, but I think we pull from different sections of the pool in the way. So I think it is a factor, but I also have no illusions that we're gonna start at sixty thousand.
No, no, I.
But I, I don't, I can't answer that question completely because I haven't got all the information of where we're at around there. Um, I imagine we're gonna be on the low end of that, but I'm more concerned are we on the low end of that than comparable to those small towns? And I, I don't have that information for you yet, but I have started, uh, putting, putting that together.
Farming just did a study.
Okay.
So you might ask one of them.
I might, I might have an email out to someone you know that hasn't been responded to yet. I wasn't gonna put me on the throne, everybody under the bus.
Yeah, they just done a study.
Gotcha. I heard that, and I did reach out to him.
Yeah.
And said, hey, can I, can I copy off your homework?
Yeah.
So I haven't heard back yet, and when I do that, it will be publicly available. That's the, the typical thing we do is we ask the departments for their information, and then we share that back in a spreadsheet, Google spreadsheet, so that everybody can see where everybody's at. Uh, but it is, it has become kind of a bidding war, and, and a lot of these agencies here are just going, going to the limit. It is, it is very hard to be competitive, uh, with those larger agencies and some of those small towns as well. But, uh, I'll hopefully know more in the next month, kind of where we're at, but. I'm, I'm sure that's a factor, for sure, about how much of it is. I don't have an number.
Yeah. Guarantee it's a, a small factor for sure.
Yeah, well, Facebook, according to Facebook, I make eighty thousand, or they laugh at the fact you can make fifty thousand in four years, so I, I've got, I can feed that both ways, so, uh, they think we make more, or we think we don't make enough, so. But, uh, yeah, I'll never, I'll never say we, we certainly it would hurt to have, you know, a higher starting fee, for sure. It doesn't hurt anything, but it's not the only factor in the equation, for sure.
No, no, I, there's, there's a lot to be said working, especially if you're from this area and you wanna work in your, your hometown or near your hometown. There's a lot to be said for that.
Yeah, and that's why I'm leaning towards the, or constantly leaning, considering a part-timer that's spent time here, has worked here, has done police work. We know what kind of police work they do, and, uh, moving them through their career. I also understand that they could leave at a certain kind of ti- point too, but at least I have direct experience and knowledge of their work ethic and how they work. So I know if I'm investing the time, I kind of know what I'm getting versus a complete, I don't know.
Sure.
So I'm trying to weigh that evenly as I possibly.
Well, now, ain't it payback eighteen months? I gotta work eighteen months.
It might be, it might be twenty-four.
It's twenty-four.
Is it twenty-four now?
Yeah, so, even then, it, it helps a little bit, but still, you got time is what, it kills you. But I, I think, uh, that is definitely an option on the table. They've invested in us and working part-time. Actually, I think he started auxiliary and then part-time, if I'm not mistaken. Somebody's already kind of put some time in, and we know how he is, so, we might, uh, continue that relationship and invest in him and send him to the Academy. That's, that's definitely an option on the table. Thank you.
Anything else for Chief Goggins?
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Next, Public Works, Isaac.
Uh, a whole lot to report. We are often running on our water line replacement for rock foot. Uh, we're about six hundred feet into fourteen hundred feet, so we should have that done in twenty days, I'm hoping about twenty days. Uh, I did get a contract back from RDOC on the one-seventy. We are at roughly fifty percent of that being reimbursable, so, uh, Zach and I are gonna go through that contract tomorrow, cause I think some of their numbers are off. But we'll have that for you to sign before long, and then we can start getting that stuff. Piecing it out, the parts that we won't bid out, uh, the road crossings, some of the big sewer that, that I don't tackle, so. Some of that'll go out to bid, and we'll let a contractor do that. Uh, we did have a big leak, uh, Christie called that in up on North Centennial, like, the weekend before we started replacing that line. Uh, people, I think people come numb to water coming out of the ground and running down the street, cause it's everywhere in Fayetteville. So they don't call. That's, that's two major leaks that we've had here that, I don't know how many people's drove by and they don't call. I, I think they're just used to seeing it. So this is my public announcement. If you, if you see water coming out of the ground, please call us. We will come fix it, so.
You won't put it off till after the weekend or?
No, no, we try not to, so, uh. But yeah, we'll, we'll keep moving forward on the water line. Uh, we did get our sewer repair done. That's, I like a little bit of cleanup up there, but hopefully we can get back up there and get the trees moved out of the way, and that's, that's done, so. Soon as this is done, then we gotta do another sewer repair down here and, and so on and so forth, so that's my life. Uh, it, it has helped that Smith Street building has kind of slowed down. I'm not doing ten inspections a week over there, so I am able to get some more stuff done, so.
And they're down to six lots?
I think, I think it's six lots in there.
Please put the, the footing on that online this past week.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, and he is working on, their concrete guys are working on giving me a bid to, to do sidewalk all the way down Clark to, to Lloyd or Hidden Creek and do sidewalk from Clark to ten, ten. Uh, give me a price to do those, since they're there anyway, so. I asked him, I said, just tell me a number, and we'll see what it looks like, so. Hopefully that one will get wrapped up. I haven't heard anymore about the stormwater over there, so I'm hoping that houses going up in the, in the curb and gutter and the yards, we're not, we're not flooding out the mosses as bad as we were, so. So hopefully that's fixing part of that issue. I did see a concept on Park Street today, uh, I don't, I didn't know they could get that many houses in there, but I don't know if that'll go forward, but, but I did see a concept on that. And I'm working with another guy on a piece of property on Centennial, and he's trying to figure out how to get water inserted, so. All that in the background.
Is there any movement on, uh, the bank prop, the next door to the bank?
Uh, so Dan called me the other day about, uh, something TJ sparked you on, about entrance in and, in and out, so, uh, we do, we, we have it to where he could go out the back now, if he just add on to the storm boxes that we put in, uh, Riverwood. They could, they could build an entrance out the back now pretty easily, so.
So what Isaac's alluding to is, if you build, uh, a subdivision with over thirty homes in it, uh, you've gotta have an entry and an exit, so you have to have multiple ways to ingress, egress. That's part of the fire code. And so, um, what had been looked at there prior with putting the commercial up front was gonna, uh, was going to meet that requirement, just the way the, the traffic was gonna flow and enter and exit off of, of seventy-one. But now, going back to just homes on that property, uh, that's, that's something that's coming up again, that's having to be addressed.
There's a, I mean, there's ample water there and plenty of sewer, so it's just the ingress and egress, I think, is the part of that.
And that's not West Fork rules, that's, that's state rules.
Right, yeah. And I haven't heard anything else on the, the cottages over here on the block, so.
I sort of tell you what, they had talked about that, weren't they?
Yeah.
Not just halt above the block?
Yeah, the, Paige probably called me about some stuff in our specs, about what materials they could use. So I, I assumed they were gonna start moving fairly quickly, but I don't know. They're not selling as many over here as they, they were, so maybe they pump the brakes on, on that one. Maybe they're waiting to get this one done before they tackle another one, so. I know the guy I deal with over here said they're trying to finish up a big one in Centerton, so.
Yeah, I knew they had, I knew they had a couple of their subdivisions going in other, other areas, so.
But yeah. Log in.
Questions for Isaac?
So log in.
Isaac, uh, we've got some requests to stripe McKnight Street.
Okay.
Um, so, put that in your, in your thoughts and your budget.
I don't know if Chad's guy is just parking lots only, or if he'll do a street, he's totally cheap at it, so.
Who, who did Chad use? Booth?
To strike?
Yeah.
Um, no, it's an individual. He, Mike, I don't, I'd have to.
I sort of say, I'm getting a parking lot striped to- tomorrow, and he was pretty cheap also.
Mike does really good work, and he's, he's, he's really, really reasonable.
Chad changed the design only like three times. He didn't even have to charge.
Yeah. He had to go in blackouts and stuff and redo it, and anyway, I was like, dude, I need to pay you more. But he does good work.
So anyway, that's, that's something that was brought up, was getting a stripe on, on McKnight.
This end, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Cause everything that RDOC done, I think they put a stripe on it.
Uh, I'm not sure that.
Down by Graystone, I think that's striped, too. It's striped. You drive it every day.
My wife, my wife says there's nothing.
Really?
Yes.
I wasn't throwing her under the bus, and I don't even have to go home to her.
But she's been complaining, she's been complaining to me.
Okay.
That she almost gets run off the road because kids won't stay on their side of the road.
There's also some speeding concerns on South McKnight.
And we, we've sent some people down there and yet to catch anybody, but we'll continue.
Okay.
And you'll probably have to pressure watch a few spots before you stripe.
Yeah.
I was gonna throw into it.
Why not? But we should know on our state aid saving, uh, I thought he said December. We know by December, so. So we're hopeful. I have that, that's a laundry list of things I have to do before they come out, too.
I'd rather.
Anything else for Isaac? This side of the council's been kind of quiet.
Y'all got approval cover?
Okay, thank you, Isaac. Next, Parks Director Harris. And I think we should probably start with a round of applause here.
Amen.
Is that not? I know, I know a lot of other people go into that, but, uh, Chad has a lot of thought and effort into making sure that that event is ready.
Yeah. And it was an awesome show.
It was incredible.
Applause start there, then. Uh, we gave our Fourth of July event, and I thought it was very successful, um, and you were correct. There's a lot more behind the scenes. I will say first that I missed my former right-hand man, uh, although I did still take things to him and make sure I wasn't forgetting. It wasn't the same as having him there telling me all the things I was forgetting every day, but, uh.
Glad that he wouldn't even help him help.
He did help. He did. He did it, but it wasn't quite the same. Uh, ball season was a little different without him, but getting ready for that was, it's a lot of mental prep goes into that as well, so, but. I do wanna thank, uh, thank Chief Arton and, and Fire Department and, and Chief Goggins and the Police Department for all that they do, traffic control, crowd control, parking, and just, and once again, they, they did a great job. Uh, Isaac and his guys helped, um, helped us in, in preparation and cleanup as well. Amanda did stuff for me at the office, so there's several, uh, Marie for being involved, uh, with the library. So it was, it was, it was a city event, and, um, also, I wanna thank the Boy Scouts. They do a lot of work, uh, both, uh, several churches, but First Baptist man's the, uh, inflatable for us primarily, and that's a lot of work. I wanna make sure and give them a shout-out as well, and I'm not gonna forget people, but anyone that, um, helped and stuck around and helped pick up trash and distribute ice cream and all those little things, keep water totes full, and, and I just, it, it takes a lot, uh, we do a lot behind the scenes and getting ready for it, but, like, there's, there's a lot that goes in, and, and I, I can't do it by myself. So, and Dwayne did a great job. I don't wanna downplay, he, he did, but he just, he didn't know what to do as much as, uh, TJ did in the past. So that's where I miss having TJ around, but it went well. I thought there were several things that I got some feedback from some of the food truck people. They were very happy with, with things where they weren't as slammed as last year. They were steady. I think one of them, I know for sure, well, not sure, I'm pretty sure I know of one of them at least ran out of food, which is a good thing. But people weren't having to wait in line for thirty, forty minutes like they were last year. It was, it was steady, and they did, they did well, and they were all happy. Uh, so that's good, and, um, I think it went really well, so.
Same with the smaller crowd.
Um, I don't know, it's hard to say. They, they s- they starve.
It wasn't as crowded, no, kids, B and N, we were in with the kids.
The kids zone was very crowded.
Yeah, that was.
Um, I think not having the free food, they triple in more, but by the end, there's still a lot of people there. Just going by the parking, I mean, all the parking we have available was, was still filled up. I, I think we've got it to a more manageable crowd now that we're not doing food. We have cut it, you know, it wasn't, the last year that we did food, it was, I mean, they were lined up over here to the road tracks, trying to get in, and it was a third minute late, just trying to get in. And then you got down there, and there was nowhere to park, so.
And I, I had some people tell me they watched it from Dollar General.
Yeah, we had several people watch it from, from lots of areas in town. I know some people went to Riverside and, and, uh, and it's not ideal watching it. It's best if you're in the park, but if, if you can't do it, and, uh, but the crowds are, are still good. There's still a lot, they're a little bit more manageable than they have been in the past. Yeah, no, I agree with that.
Well, and they're not, they're spread out more. They're not congested down in that centralized area.
And they're, like I said, they're coming in, they're starting slower. I think they got there a lot earlier. They didn't want to miss out on the free food until they were getting there. And now they, they kind of, cause even in the beginning, same as last year, but, you know, we get that, food trucks weren't that busy. There wasn't a lot of people. But then you turn around, and there's people everywhere, so. Uh, but yeah, well, I do wanna, I'm sure and listing those people or someone of that kind of thing, but anyone that helped out, I greatly appreciate it.
So the food truck, we're pleased with?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I haven't talked, I reached out to all of them. I haven't heard, got feedback from, from all of them, but, uh, but, um, the three or four that I have heard back were very, very pleased. Uh, so they all seemed very happy with, with it, how they did and turned out and the whole event in general, so. Uh, yeah, uh, if y'all have questions specifically on that or anything.
Okay.
We also finished up our ball season, um, we, which was a great year again. We, uh, the end of the season tournaments that we hosted went really well. We were supposed to end by Wednesday, and we started on Wednesday because of the rain, but other than that, it, it went, went real well. I had several teams throughout the league that, that won their, not several, but a few teams that won their leagues, and very, several were very, very well in tournaments and stuff, so that's encouraging, and, uh, so that was good. Now we're just moving on. We have several maintenance and repair and some projects that kind of we've just pushed to the side that, uh, specifically at Riverside and some at Carter that, uh, we're gonna jump on and track with those caught up, and we have several off-season projects, you know, our normal work in our fields and our facilities, but, uh, we're gonna do some improvements in the disc golf course. We've got some, some, uh, improvements planned for Carter Park as well, and, and, uh, so we got. We're still gonna be busy. I mean, maybe as busy as we've been the last six months, but we're still gonna be busy, so, yeah, we've, we've, we've got some projects coming up. We'll be hopefully getting done and accomplishing in the next several, several months, so.
How's our summers going at Riverside with all the outside that we?
Um. So I think overall pretty well. I mean, it's the same, maybe a little better, um, on our end, just not, I can just basically, you know, picking up trash. Uh, doesn't seem to be as messy on Monday mornings after, now the holiday weekends, I, I try to pay someone to go down there and do trash a little bit, uh, we have to, and that keeps me and, and my employee from having to spend our holiday weekend going down there, although we do as well. keeps me and, and my employee from having to spend our holiday weekend going down there, although we do as well, I want, so, but, uh, but we pay someone to keep on bathrooms, pick up the trash, and that helps, but I think overall, and maybe Gobbins has a different opinion, but, um, I think overall, it's not been, not been terrible, maybe I'm just getting more accustomed to it, but we haven't had any real major issues down there, uh, we had vandalism, you know, with the restrooms, and that was really before the big crowds started even coming, so, that could happen, there was no crowds, but I don't think parking's been a big issue, we haven't had a lot of people parking a lot where they weren't supposed to, that I'm aware of.
Pretty cool.
Uh, now they're parking around town, but as far as parking down there and getting in fire zones and grass and stuff, I don't think there's been a lot of that, uh, it's just, it's a busy park, it's a busy park, some people respect it and a lot of them don't, so. I don't think I have anything else.
Who put up the flags around town?
Uh, Isaac and, and his guys put those up.
I meant to tell one of you thank you for that, but I didn't know who did it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Isaac, that looks nice.
Well.
Among the other things he had to do.
That was, that was Isaac's department, so, we tried to help when we can, but it didn't work out this time, so. But yeah, this is how long I take those time to buy, we used to leave them up and, and take them down, put them back up for the next event, so.
Anything else for Chad? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Chad, why was the fireworks, this place, slow this year?
Slow? Sorry.
It had, had a slow spot.
Oh, yeah, well, there was a missing kid, and there was people back there in the area looking for the missing kid, so they had stopped for a little bit while that was in rest. So we had a little bit of a break there when it got started, but then after they got going, I thought it was maybe the best show yet.
I think so.
It was great.
TJ? Chief Arton, Fire Department?
Yes, sir. As far as numbers go, um, hundred and twelve for the month of June, six fires, um, we had a pretty good uptick in bad motor vehicle accidents for whatever reason, um, beginning of summer, I'm not sure, but, um, it's going pretty well. Our training hours, they're not on there, um, we've already surpassed last year's total on training hours, so, you guys are doing a really good job, I appreciate all their hard work, and we, in the last month, uh, had blood drive with the police, um.
Keep going, isn't bringing that up?
I don't know, I don't know, that's, we did well, um, anyway, we had a successful blood drive, um, we had, uh, a good weekend live burn, uh, where we did some training burns, uh, it was sad, no one decided to come play with us, but, uh, we had a good, we had a good showing, um, had a lot of young inexperienced people on the Fire Department that were there that got to do things that they had never got to do, and I got to stand over the top of them and make sure they did it right, so it was, it was good. Uh, we had a good turnout today. Um, we, several months ago, talked about a grant, um, you guys approved, um, a matching fifteen thousand dollar grant for bunker gear, um, we did receive that grant this month, um, so I think that'll be later on in, in this meeting, we discussed that a little bit, but, um, the way that has fallen out, um, we were able to purchase total between the rule of the city and the grant, um, twelve new sets of bunker gear, um, which is, now has all of our firefighters in safe, good, up to date, new gear, uh, which is very important to me, so I thank you guys for that, um, we got sized and fitted, and that's all been on order, so that should be. They have to build it, um, it didn't come off a rack, so it'll be probably six or eight weeks before it gets here, but, um, that process has started. That's about it for me for this month.
Any questions for Chief Arton?
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Christie with our finance reports.
Just wanna start with the court report, if you guys noticed, we have put a new format in there, um, hopefully we have put information on there that is a little bit easier to understand than, than the old reports, um, but hopefully covered, uh, current information that'll be helpful for you guys to see what's being done in that department. Um, we have the trials and arraignments listed on there, um, citations received this month for a total of six, or seventy-six citations, um, year to date, we are down, uh, two hundred and fifty to three hundred from where we were this time last year. Um, on the distributions, if you look at the totals down there for the Westport Police and the Court, that's about sixteen thousand dollars, um, that we got to keep out of the twenty-nine thousand seven hundred that was, uh, distributed this month, uh, year to date, we're about sixty thousand dollars under where we were this time last year, um, for what we have collected and distributed. Um, so the bottom graph down there shows the outstanding time pay balances, that, that is where people have made an agreement to make, um, monthly payments on their fines. Um, as you can see, that's a twelve-month running balance, um, that spikes, and I think that typically spikes at the end of the year, each year, people aren't as good about paying on their fines during the holiday season, and then you get to tax season, and people start paying bigger chunks and pay it down, so, um, that is, the court clerks are, um, making that a priority to stay on top of those, to make sure that we're getting notices out and warrants written to people that aren't responding to those, uh, payments like they're supposed to. There is some new legislation going into, uh, effect as far as the time pay fees, um, right now, I wanna say the time pay fee per month is nine, is ten dollars. That's distributed part of that, we get to keep part of it, we don't, they have now put a cap on that, there hasn't been a cap in the past, I think it's gonna be ninety dollars, so even if they pay for two years on something, the most we can ever collect on them is ninety dollars, um, I think that's something that we'll eventually, um, try to talk the judge into what I would like to do is try to talk the judge into allowing payments for only as long as that payment fee is very able to collect that fee, so. And there's gonna be situations, obviously, if someone has a five thousand dollar fee, they're not able to pay that in five months, but in a situation where someone's paying off a traffic tip, ticket that's a hundred and fifty dollars, um, my opinion is we should be making them pay that off, in, in the amount of time that it takes to collect that fee and not pass that, so, some of, just a few things that we're working on to try to, um, get those time, time pay balances down a little bit. On the city report, um, it does show that our cash flow has gone down about a hundred thousand so far this year, um, that's fluctu- fluctuating quite a bit with some of our large purchases, um, our overall budget is showing over fifty-three thousand over budget, the Street Department has a large portion of that at ninety-one thousand over budget, there is a large portion of that that we're gonna start getting reimbursements for, so I think that will even itself out a little bit, um, and overall, the departments are kinda catching up from where we were earlier this year, so. Still hopeful that we will end the year in a little bit better shape than we are right now. Sales tax is staying fairly steady at around ten to eleven percent increase from where we were last year. Um, on the water side of things, uh, the water overall is over, or in the black at a hundred and fifty, um, under budget, um, we have decreased our cash balances a little bit, at fifty-one thousand for the year. The sewer expense and income down there, as you can see, this was the first month that we had that we were in the red, um, after paying those expenses, next year will be this, or next year, next month will be the same, um, the payment that we made for June was sixty-seven thousand dollars, so that bill this month, it's like seventy-three thousand. So, it'll be another month, um, where we see a loss, but hopefully, um, those will be the only two months that we're looking at this year, so that's a huge break from where we were last year.
And the crazy thing is it's in June and July that we're seeing it.
Right, yeah, our weather's crazy. Um, so that's all I have, I did on your actual financials, I went through and underlined since we're, um, at the halfway point of the year, went through and underlined some line items on each department, um, just for apartment heads mainly to kinda see, um, line items that they might have some control over to kinda be able to slow down on some things we didn't have a choice on, like our building maintenance, that's already a hundred and forty percent over budget for the year, it is what it is, I know the Police Department continues to have vehicles fall apart every week, so, um, we're doing the best we can with those expenses, and hopefully there's some other line items within the budgets that we can offset that expense to that, so. Anything for me?
Questions for Christie? No? So, I will just add on to what Christie said, so, as you guys know, Christie's had that, uh, that item, uh, for us for a couple of years now, where we've been trapped in sales tax. There was an article about a month ago that came out that said that, that Rogers of all places is seeing a decline in sales tax, a, a significant decline. So, that was a little concerning to me, uh, we had so much going on last month, I forgot to bring that up, but, um, that's out there, uh, two months after that article comes out, and Westwork's still tracking pre-level and up, so that's, that's a positive, uh, that's a positive thing for us, but it's something I think we need to be aware of, if, if some of the larger cities that have more, uh, sales tax generating businesses that are, are seeing a decline, that's, that's something that we need to stay focused on and be aware of, but so far, all is well.
Keep buying online.
That's right, keep buying online. Thank you, Christie.
Prime-based, Brian, prime-based.
So, next item.
Help the city out, Brian.
The next item is, uh, a procedural motion for any and all ordinances on our agenda for tonight, and we do have an ordinance on the agenda tonight. Would anyone like to make a procedural motion?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rule read by title only.
I second.
We have a motion to second to suspend the rules and read by title only, and we'll need a roll call vote to approve that. Mr. Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Ken Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Dean McKnight? Don Rollins?
Yes.
Anthony Foster?
No, just cause I wanted to hear no.
So, we have seven yeses and one no. And our procedural motion does pass, so we can read the ordinance by title only when we get there. We don't have any old business, so, item D, new business, unfortunately, we don't have Chief Harrison with us tonight, um.
Chad was right again.
He was right again, uh, so, so Steve was supposed to be here tonight to go over the Central EMS report for us, and I think he got his dates for vacation and our dates for.
He's out of town on work.
On work, okay, so we got those dates mixed up when we set tonight for him to come, so hopefully we can get him to come another time. I, I do like it when they send us these reports, and especially when, when Steve or someone comes and presents them for us, but just to hit a couple of highlights out of his report, uh, especially things that people may not, uh, may not realize, but the service area for Central EMS is nine hundred square miles, serves a population of two hundred and sixty-six thousand. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, Central answered twenty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-seven calls for service, um, Fridays are the highest, uh, volume day, uh, for Central, they're running more calls on Fridays than any other day. Uh, they've got it, they've got it broken out what their, their biggest call times are, it looks like it's, uh, from about eight in the morning until, uh, twenty hundred, what is that, ten o'clock?
Twenty would be eight o'clock.
Twenty's eight o'clock? I think twenty's ten, yeah.
Twenty-two hundred is.
Ten o'clock?
Twenty-two hundred, so.
Okay, eight o'clock, so eight o'clock to eight o'clock, uh, let's see, the, uh, as of twenty twenty-four, they saw a twenty-one percent growth in call volume, uh, from twenty twenty. They have, uh, in twenty twenty-four, they hit an average of eighty calls a day, they're doing eighty calls a day in twenty-four, uh, trucks, so, keep that in mind. Uh, it's not a lot of utilization, what is that, uh, number? The utilization percentage? Well, tell me what it is. They've got, they, there is a, a utilization rate out there that they track for Fire Departments and for ambulance services, to see how much time is in between calls and how, how available, uh, a truck is, and, and so, uh, obviously with them doing eighty calls a day with, with that many trucks, uh, they're, they're getting very high in that utilization, uh, category, and so, uh, the Ambulance Board and the Executive Committee are, is something that they're working on, trying to make sure, uh, that that stays low, that we, we get it lower, and, and looking at some different ways to do that, I wish Steve was here to talk about that, and maybe he'll be here. Uh, so something that, that I think's really important is they strive for two minutes, uh, or less, uh, from the time a call comes in until they're, uh, they call it out of the chute in twenty twenty-four, uh, that, that time from the call to, to being on the chute or out of the chute, uh, averaged forty-seven se- forty-six seconds ninety-seven percent of the time. So, uh, when you call, uh, you know that a vehicle is rolling rather quickly, so that's good. Uh, falls are the most common response that they're running to, uh, they had over three thousand calls for falls in twenty-four. The average age of patients was sixty-six years old, and females accounted for fifty-five percent of nine-one-one calls. Uh, you can see there what the call volume is by city, you can see that Westwork's call volume has actually decreased over the last three years, uh, that's gonna be disheartening when, when we find out that Central is getting ready to, uh, ask for, uh, an increase in our subsidies, uh, for all cities, and so, when we see Westwork's call volume going down, but, uh, our subsidy amount going up to some degree, uh, that, that can be concerning for us, but, uh, it's been going down the last three years, that doesn't mean that that trend is gonna stay, and, uh, we're blessed to have a station here in Westwork that they're, that they utilize, so, um, we'll hear more about the subsidy change in the future. So then there's a, they do have a breakdown of, of how they get paid, um, you can see that the largest percentage of their payments coming from patient revenue, uh, and then the subsidy breakdown, memberships and, uh, government grants and different things. Any questions concerning that, that can't wait until we can get a representative here? Uh, item two under new business is approve a budget cover, or budget overage of fifteen thousand dollars from reserves for matching funds for the grant that was received, this is what TJ was talking about earlier, uh, a few meetings back, uh, hasn't been that long, cause TJ's only been chief for six meetings, but he came in, he came in and said, guys, I'd like to apply for a grant, would you guys, uh, back me up? If I get that, it's, it's a matching grant, now I think the council, uh, thought, well, this, this young, this young chief doesn't have a chance of getting this grant, cause we didn't even ask him how much it was gonna be, or discuss where we were gonna get the money from, we said, go for it, chief, well, he went for it, and he has been granted the grant, and now he's come to us saying, call me up, you guys told me you would, so. We, we need to approve this budget overage of fifteen thousand dollars.
Make a motion to approve it.
I second.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no, Anthony?
No, no nos this time.
That motion carries, and we will get you your money, TJ.
Make a motion, we asked more questions next time.
We left that meeting and Christie said, Mayor, where's that coming from?
Yeah.
Well, we'll discuss that in the future.
Could be worse, it could be paying the whole thing.
That's right, that's right, so, no, glad we had it, uh, glad we have the money to cover it, um, so, but we probably should, uh, in, in the future, discuss those a little bit more.
We trust him.
Um. So, item three. So item three under new business is ordinance two zero two five dash five three five and that's a change. Uh in setbacks in one of our uh new zoning codes and I'll let the city attorney read that by title only and.
This is an ordinance to amend appendix A of Title fourteen zoning of the Westwood Municipal Code. When you receive a motion, do pass.
And so it, what this is, is when we when we changed uh when we voted on that new zoning ordinance, it was kinda the same way. We didn't ask a lot of questions and pass that. And a couple of things have came up since then. Uh they're gonna keep them coming up. Uh that's, it's a good ordinance but it's not a perfect ordinance. And uh we're we'll, we will continue to see some things that we need to adjust in. This is one of them. Uh this is concerning. Primarily where it came up was on Highway seventy-one. Uh the setbacks uh were such that um. Someone couldn't build a business on seventy-one and have parking in the front of it. So uh the way the code read, they had to put the building right out on front of seventy-one. That's good for an aesthetic uh an aesthetics uh thing, right? Because we have parking in the back but a lot of businesses that are gonna come to Highway seventy-one. Are probably gonna want front parking and and visibility more so than than rear parking. So that's what we are, we are fixing here. Is there any questions about that?
Make a motion.
Don, five bucks if you can read me one thing off of that page.
I know, seriously.
He's been over there studying that like he can see it?
No, I was studying the other side of it.
Oh, okay.
This is crazy.
Alright, it is.
Make a motion to pass it.
We have a motion and second to pass ordinance two zero two five dash five three five. Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden, sorry. Marty Lindenberry?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Dean McKnight?
Yeah.
Don Rollins?
Yes, and I can read some of this. Give me five bucks.
Anthony Foster?
Yes.
Alright, that ordinance has passed and we will get the zoning ordinance updated. Item E is other business. Does anyone have any other other business?
Well, um we had someone that was interested in um talking about putting up In God We Trust. Do we wanna have that on there and then like um. People look into it, kind of.
So. So yes, uh Misty, that that is something that uh we discussed in a department head meeting a month or two back. Uh it was brought up that that we used to have In God We Trust in the courtroom above our mural and that when we moved, we didn't move it uh and I think we didn't move it because it was painted. Uh but it is kinda, it. I hadn't noticed to be perfectly honest with you. Uh we moved the mural and and it was always above the mural and I just. Uh so, yeah, that is something we're gonna look at. There has been a new bill that's been passed that concerns some of that and so I think that's something that we need to. Uh so putting In God We Trust up is something we've already discussed and 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 trying to to work toward doing it but now we have a new bill and I think we need some time to. Look through that and maybe get some guidance from uh our city attorney on on how that new bill is gonna affect. Potentially that as as well as some other things in the city so. Would you like to have that on the council meeting on the agenda for next month?
Yes.
To have a discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. We'll get a note of that.
Anybody with thoughts on all of this? Oh yeah, that's nice.
Is there any other other business? Yeah. So I have uh something I'd like to uh just touch on a little bit. It's a report uh from the Northwest uh. Uh the Northwest Arkansas Council so this isn't the. What's it called? The uh.
Regional planning.
Yeah, it's not regional planning. This is, this is the Northwest Arkansas Council that was put together. Uh by Walmart, Tyson, JB Hunt, some others. They put together a group to kinda study Northwest Arkansas many years ago. Do you know when they put that together? Tell them.
The the bench, what's it called? The bench? Benchmark but. That big report they've been doing.
Oh, the Skyline Report?
Skyline, that's been coming out of my business for at least twenty years or more.
Yeah.
And I think that may be the precursor to.
To this, okay. So anyway, I was able to get a, get a copy of that report. And uh found a couple of things very interesting. So uh the Northwest Ar- or the Northwest Arkansas Council. Uh has taken and benchmarked our area uh to some other areas around the nation that that they felt. Matched us, that it was somebody that we could, we could look at their progress and then judge our own progress based on some of that so. I thought that was cool. I think that's always something important to do is benchmark yourselves against somebody. Uh but in the report. A couple of topics that they highlighted was uh population uh is, most recent data puts the population in Northwest Arkansas at five hundred and ninety thousand. A year ago, it's at five hundred and seventy-six thousand so it's uh almost a two and a half percent increase uh in a year uh in the area. Uh real GDP, uh how much product are we producing in our area? Has went up almost three percent. Uh so that's kind of an indicator that that people are building things and selling things in the area. Uh the average unemployment rate is at two point four percent. Median household household income uh has risen six percent. Uh average annual wages have went up five percent. There's been a four percent increase in in new businesses in the area. They track uh the percent of the adult population that have a bachelor's degree. Uh that in our area, that's sitting at thirty-six point six percent. That's actually the lowest. Of any area that we're benchmarking against. Uh our poverty poverty rate uh in Northwest Arkansas is at ten point four percent. Uh they've got uh R and D expenditures uh just showing how much research is going on in the area. Uh it's up eleven, almost twelve percent. Uh the average uh domestic airfare, uh kind of a metric to. The higher it is to get somewhere, probably the less uh travel that you're seeing, tourism you're seeing in that area so. Uh I think that's why they're tracking that merit metric. Uh we have one of the, one of the higher uh. Domestic airline tickets to get in into the region so uh that that kinda shows that we're, we're probably not getting some of the tourism that that other places are at this point. So between twenty-two and twenty-three, there were eighty-three hundred new jobs created. The GDP has grown six, six billion dollars since twenty seventeen. Uh since twenty twenty-two, the annual house uh household income has increased six percent. I think I already said that. Annual wages are up ten thousand dollars since twenty eighteen. Home ownership. So the cost of of homeownership's went up five point four but in our area, the typical homeowner is spending forty-nine percent of their income on housing. That's a lot. Uh most personal financial uh programs will tell you it shouldn't be over thirty percent, uh thirty-five percent and we're seeing fifty percent in the area so that's showing that there's not a lot of. Uh discretionary uh money to be spent around. So anyway, interesting report. Um. It's nice to know that they're tracking the the area and it's kinda interesting to see what they're tracking, what metrics they've they've identified as.
What timeframe is that?
Uh this is the twenty-four report. So I had that. That was the only other other business I had, John. So item F, we'll move into mayor's comments. Uh just wanted to say thank you to everybody that participated in the Fourth of July. Uh as Chad said, there's a lot of people involved in that but. Did anybody see me on Facebook on the on the county's Facebook page? Yeah, uh so I said it was gonna be tiger against tiger. Uh Westwood or Purgro was doing theirs uh at the same time. Most people couldn't understand the Purgro mayor when he was talking but. Uh he's a good guy anyway. But I said that Westwood was gonna put on a better show and from all of the uh information that I've received. Uh we blew them way out of the water so uh Chad does a great job with that. Everybody that helps him does a great job but I know Chad in particular puts a lot of time, effort and stress into that event and uh. It's it's a great event so good work, Chad. That's all I had.
I like motion when you adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries.
I didn't say that, I was messing John all up.
I know.